Affairs and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is now 6:35 PM on Wednesday, September 14, 2016. I want to thank the Vice Mayor who is here this evening. And I want to introduce the Senators that have joined us this evening. To my left is Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz. To his left is Senator Frank Gloss. To my right is Senator Mary Torres. And to her right is Senator Nerissa Underwood. And I know I saw Senator Jimmy Spaldon here. And I know that Senator Tommy Morrison said that he was also going. He is a co-sponsor of the bills we're hearing tonight. I also want to recognize the presence of, of course, Mr. Mike Borja, the Director of Land Management, who has joined us this evening. And so, before I open it up for the Vice Mayor to give some opening remarks, I want to, I need to go through the preliminaries here. And so, notice of this public hearing was provided to the general public, Senators, stakeholders, and the local media on August 31, 2016, satisfying the five-day notice, and September 2, 2016, satisfying the 48-hour notice. Thus, the meeting, this meeting meets the requirements of the open government law. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM on Monday, September 26, 2016. Please address the testimony to Senator Thomas Siata, Chairperson of the Committee on Lands. Tonight's public hearing is the first of a planned series of seven public hearings to be held in Southern Guam. Last week, we were actually supposed to have that initial meeting in Santa Rita, but that was the day that the GPA had to do some load shedding. And it just so happened that at the time that we had scheduled for the public hearing over there in Santa Rita, that particular area was scheduled for a power outage. And so, the mayor had asked that we postpone it. And we decided then to go ahead and, and hold that hearing here tonight, both with Aggett and Santa Rita combined. The next meetings that we have, that will follow, is tomorrow, we will go to Maritzo, to the Senior Citizen Center. Next week, on Monday, Inorahan Community Center on the 20th, Talafofa, their community center there. On Wednesday, the 21st, we're going to go to Jotnia. On the 22nd, we're going to go to Umatic. And then, on the 23rd, we will have a public hearing in the afternoon at 1:00 PM for basically the general public. The, the objective here tonight, of course, is if you notice when you came in, there's two sign-up sheets. The sign-up sheet for residents of Aggett and Santa Rita, who we, you know, who, they're the people of the house and we want to give them the primary, the priority to voice their opinions on the two bills. And then, the other sign-up sheet for residents outside. I do want to recognize the presence of representatives of Save Southern Guam, Dr. Diane Strong and LaCia, right? Who is also a resident of Aggett. So, you're on the priority sheet, okay? As a resident of Aggett. Okay. So, what we're going to discuss tonight, and what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go ahead and just give a brief overview of the two bills that we're going to introduce. And then, when we call up for individuals to provide testimony, you can go ahead and, and talk about both bills, preferably in, you know, in the sequence of Bill 365 and 366. So, the first one we're going to have here is 365. Bill 365, Bill 365 is simply establishes that the law requires that when a land use application gets submitted to the Department of Land Management for review and disposition by the Guam Land Use Commission, the application is given to a body called the Application Review Committee. And that committee is comprised of representatives from Guam Water Works, Guam Power, Guam EPA. And they basically, you know, provide their technical expertise, review, and provide their findings as to how this project, this land use application might affect the particular area in the vicinity. And, but the law also requires that a, a public hearing be held in that municipality. Take, for example, in Jotnia for that Pago Bay Towers. But what, what happens in reality is that the village hearing is not necessarily always informed by the findings of the Application Review Committee, the experts. And basically, what they have, there is, I guess, the, they just don't have the benefit of, you know, the findings of that. And then, the findings of the village meetings and the ARC gets put together and it gets submitted to the, to the Guam Land Use Commission for final disposition. What we're doing here in Bill 365 simply says, before that village meeting occurs, the findings of the Application Review Committee must first be provided to that municipal planning council so that they can make an informed decision as to whether they want to support, whether they are in support of the project or not. And that's all that it does. It provides some delay, but it makes sure that that village meeting is an informed village meeting. The net, the other bill that we're going to be, that this public hearing is about, is Bill 366-33, which proposes to impose a two-year moratorium on any development in the south with the exception of construction for residential activity. So, if I wanted to build my house, no problem. We can still go ahead and, and do that. But if there was going to be a commercial development, Bill 366 basically imposes a two-year moratorium or until the southern development master plan is completed, whichever comes first. And it kind of makes sense. You don't want to go building your house while the architect and the engineers are still, you know, designing how that house is going to look. So, in the same, in the same vein, the, the Southern Development Master Plan, which was a bill that was authored by Senator Tommy Morrison, they've, they've got that organized now and they've got to start working on that. And so, whichever comes first, either two years lapses, then the moratorium is lifted, or hopefully that, that master plan is, is completed and then we can go ahead and move on with our lives for the next two years. Now, with that, I'm going to go ahead and, and ask the Vice Mayor to, to give opening remarks. And you can also go ahead and roll in your testimony on the two bills. We, we do have quite a number of people. However, it was not clear when you signed up whether you also want to give written or oral testimony. So, LaCia, did you want to give oral testimony?
Okay.
Bill Kundev, yes. V.I.C. Vicente, no. Then, Mr. Concepcion. Concepcion, Jamo, Jamoylin? Okay. And then, we got Chris Farron. No, no oral testimony. Mr. Rages or Provant, okay. Roy Gumboa? None? Okay. A, Mr. Babalta? Tony, Tony Babalta?
My dear, let me first introduce what one wants to say.
Okay? All right? All right. I'll just go ahead and check you off and then you can opt out. And then, I have, I think, I think that was all the people. Did I miss anybody that signed up? Okay. And then, Santa Rita resident Fred Concepcion? No? Oh. Oh, you signed all the sheets. Okay. So, Vice Mayor, if you, if I may first, Senator, do you want to? Okay.
Bonjour, Sen. Hoffery. On behalf of the village of Aggett, Mayor Carol Tuyama, myself, our MPC, we would like to welcome, of course, all the Senators, Senator Nerissa Underwood, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Tommy Morrison, Termon, Senator Ada, Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Frank Gloss, as well as Director Mike Borja, and all of our concerned visitors and the villagers of Aggett who are here in support of the bill. We would like to thank you for showing and sharing your interest within the bills for Bill 365-33 and Bill 366-33, which will be held here. And we thank you for coming and listening and partaking in this discussion that will benefit the entire southern residents of Guam. I'm here tonight as the Vice Mayor of this beautiful and serene village of Aggett, and also as a resident to testify wholeheartedly in favor of Bills 365-33 and Bill 366-33. I believe that now is the time that we step back and we look forward and we create a voice for the southern villages of Guam as now we have an entity called the Southern Development Master Plan Task Force. This task force has been organized and created to oversee, compose, review, research, recommend, and partake in the economic development of the most pristine and untouched land areas of southern Guam. We must allow this task force time and support to create an acceptable, reasonable, and implementable master plan for the southern development. We can all agree, I think, at this point that we want growth and expansion for our villages. However, it's in my opinion that we must coincide with the needs of our residents and of all our visitors. The growth and expansion, however, must not, must not be below standards or hit-or-miss type of development. It has to be a development, I believe, that is fully vetted and reviewed by its constituents of the impacted villages and all concerned entities and agencies. The expectation of the development must be clear, concise, and beneficial for generations to come. Therefore, placing a moratorium on big developments until a master plan has been developed and accepted is the right thing to do, in my opinion. Bill 366-33 does exactly this. I believe it puts the brakes on future developments before it crashes head-on with our true desires and wants for our villages. Bill 365-33 is another important step in the process of being transparent and allowing for our villagers to be the true stakeholders in the development of their respective villages. After all, who knows their villages better than those who live in them? Who knows the views of both the elder and the younger generations of that village than their mayor, vice mayor, and municipal planning council members that work hand-in-hand with their residents each and every day? We need to make the mayors and vice mayors and the municipal planning council members of their respective villages be an important part of the Application Review Committee of the Guam Land Use Commission. I believe now is the time that we should all listen, but most importantly, respect the voices of the villagers that may be affected, as well as the voices of our mayors, vice mayors, and municipal planning council members of every single village. It hits very close to home here in Aggett where we've almost seen a 15-story building erected here without too many concerns or any type of public input or whatsoever. And I believe that this is the time now, I think, that, you know, this bill, I think, is in support of, of this. And that's why, you know, I, we are, including the mayor and myself, we are, we're in total support of these bills. And we applaud Senator Tom Ada and, of course, Senator Tommy Morrison for introducing and co-sponsoring these proposals, which finally recognizes that southern Guam is just as important as anywhere else on the island and it has its developments that need to be done, but in the most beneficial way for its residents. Also, for recognizing that the vice mayors, the mayors and the vice mayors and its MPC members should have a say in what happens in their respective villages. So, once again, on behalf of Mayor Carol Tuyama, myself, our entire village of Aggett and our MPC, we thank you for holding this meeting down here and allowing us to hear and listen to what the bill has more to entail.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Before I go further, I, I do need to recognize a few more people. The Vice, the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, of course, has joined us this evening. Thank you, Speaker, for joining us. I also want to recognize former Lieutenant Governor Kaleo Moylan. Oh, that's not Kaleo Moylan. I'm sorry. It's Oliver Verdany. Close, okay. Okay. All right. I don't feel too bad. And then, of course, former Undersecretary Tony Babalta. Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay. So, thank you very much for your testimony, Vice Mayor, as we go. I'd like to call up next Ms. LaCia Casil. And Mr. Kundev, you can also join Ms. Casil at the table and follow up after her testimony. Ms. Casil, please go ahead.
Good evening, Senators. My name is LaCia Casil and I'm the founder and chairwoman of Save Southern Guam. Save Southern Guam, we're a grassroots movement advocating the protection of the seashore and coastal beauty of southern Guam. First, I want to say thank you for the attention that you have given to the issue of responsible development in our southern villages. We appreciate your effort to engage with the people in our villages on a matter that will affect our lives and our families' lives forever. We believe that setting this two-year moratorium until a southern master plan is created is a step in the right direction to guiding our growth and development. The most precious resource we have in the south is our unique and beautiful landscapes, the hills, the mountains, the bays, the beaches, the coastline. And if we allow unrestricted development, it will open the floodgates for giant atrocities such as the Pago Bay Hotel and the Serena Hotel in Aggett. We can't allow agencies such as the GLUC to continue granting random variance after variance without any guidance whatsoever. This is irresponsible behavior and not how communities are built. Just to clarify, Save Southern Guam, we're not anti-development. We are for responsible development. We feel that it's important to question these projects and who they will benefit and will they add any true value to our beautiful villages. And some of these projects come into question, especially when the audience that they're marketed to is overseas and some of the units, you know, are here costing half a million dollars. Like, who is this project, you know, targeted to? So, we have reviewed your proposed bills 365-33 and 366-33. And the following are recommended changes that we offer on Bill Number 365-33. We ask that you incorporate language proposed in Bill 318-33 by Senators Frank Augen Jr. and Senator Morrison, Section 1, Line 11. For each variance application, zone change, government lease, conditional use application, and other proposed project reviewed by the Guam Land Use Commission involving land in Guam, the relevant planning council of Guam's respective villages shall register its approval or disapproval with the commission. No project shall be approved by the Guam Land Use Commission unless it has received the approval of the relevant municipal planning council. And the following are recommended changes we propose for Bill Number 366-33. The first one is add the municipality of Chalampago to Section 2-A. The second change is we propose that you delete Section 3 in its entirety. What is the purpose of filing for approval or disapproval if the legislature fails to take action within 60 days and the application automatically defaults to approval? This seems to us just like some loophole for getting something passed and defeats the purpose of the bill. The third suggestion is to delete Section 4 in its entirety. And our recommendation for Section 4 is any further actions by any board, administrative director, or employees of DLM, DPW, GPA, GEPA, GWA, and DPR that conflict with the provisions of this act shall make them collectively and/or individually subject to the civil and criminal penalties prescribed by the laws of the government of Guam. And also for Section 3, we recommend a temporary moratorium on the issuance of permits by the DLM, DPW, GEPA, GWA, GPA, and DPR. There shall be a temporary moratorium placed on the issuance of all permits to the municipalities of Santa Rita, Aggett, Umatic, Maritzo, Inorahan, Talafofa, Jotnia, Chalampago for the next two years or until such a time a southern development master plan has been developed and approved, whichever comes first. Thank you, Senators, Sidhu Smasi, for your time and efforts to include our input on these bills and coming down to speak to our villages.
I just have one question.
Yes.
You, you are recommending that Section 4, which is the exemptions to the moratorium, be deleted in its entirety. And so, that means then that for the next two years, if any resident wants to build a home, a residential home, that they are not to be able to build it?
No, no. I, then I, I recommended alternate wording. That was what I did.
Alternate wording?
Yes. And Section 4.
All right. I'm a surgery. I thought you said to, to delete Section 4 in its entirety.
And then add the following language. That's what I, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Casil? Okay. Mr. Kundev, then.
My name is Bill Kundev. I'm from Aggett and also a member of Save Southern Guam. I want to thank all of you for coming down here this evening and respecting us by having this hearing here in Aggett and other villages of the things that concern us very much. So, thank you so much for being here this evening. I support both 365 and 366. So, my testimony will go to the other one at the same time. For, for the longest time, we have been defending ourselves, defending our culture, defending our heritage, defending our ocean, defending everything after the fact. After development have been, have been going on, now the people now are going to get involved. We have been defending us for the longest time and this should never happen. We should develop, we should work together as the process goes forward. It, it has less confrontation, it is less confrontational. And I, I believe that even the developer would see where we're coming from and what, what is it that concerns us. It's so important. Sustainable development, according to the UN, is a process for meeting human development goals while sustaining the ability of natural systems to continue to provide natural resources and ecosystem services upon the economy upon which the economy and society depends. While the modern concept of sustainable development is derived mostly from the 1997 report, it is rooted in early ideas about sustainable forest management and 20th century environmental concerns. As the concept developed, it has shifted the focus on more economical development, social development, and environmental protection. Sustainable development is the organizing principle for sustaining finite resources necessary to provide for the needs of future generations of life on the planet. It is a process that envisions a desirable future state of human societies in which living conditions and resource use continue, resource use continue to meet human needs without undermining the integrity, stability, and beauty of the natural bio-organic systems. This is so important. This is in line, what you're trying to do is in line also with another UN report which envisions this concept. I'm not going to go into what the name of the report is, but it's going to tell you some of the, some of the concepts. Developing and implementing policies that promote responsive, responsible, resilient, and sustainable tourism, inclusive of all people. Diversifying sustainable tourism through products and services, including large-scale projects with positive economic, social, environmental impacts, and the development of ecotourism, agritourism, and cultural tourism. Promoting policies that allow communities to gain optimal benefits from tourism while allowing them to determine the exact extent and nature of their participation. It is high time that our people participate in this process. If we don't, it's going to be more confrontational. It's going to be more confrontational. And we don't need this. We see this happening now at the Chalampago issue. Things are done first and then people were asked to participate later on. So, I, I appreciate Bills 365 and 366 and I hope that it will be passed and we're on our way to, to good sustainable development.
Thank you very much. Mr. Babalta, did you still want to? Oh, LaCia, could you please provide a copy of your written testimony? In a second, Ms. Kundev. Okay. Thanks. Provide it to the staff right there. Do you still want to provide some testimony?
I have read the entire view here, but... My name is Antonio B. Babalta from Aggett. I haven't read the, the entire view here, but being here in Aggett, born and raised here, and I've seen the, the movement of our vehicles on the island. And I think before we do any type of development in the southern, I think we should be able to try of looking to the infrastructure to make sure that the infrastructures sustain the population of the people here in Aggett and also the people that will be, be working in the, whatever is being built here in the southern master plan. Aggett is also known to be a sleepy town and I think it's time for us to wake up and be able to have some sort of a development here in the southern area. Being that we have such a beautiful places near that is close to the beach and especially down in Sarajevo. I think, I think we need some, I think we need some southern improvement and also it will benefit the people here in Aggett because of the fact that if any improvement that is done here in Aggett, most of them will probably be, be looking for a job and it will be beneficial for them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Babalta. If I could, I'd like to, I'd like to just ask my staff, Mr. Joe Borja, to just give a brief overview using an aerial map here as to really how, with respect to Santa Rita and Aggett, where development might be taking place. So, there's the, there's the aerial map that shows Aggett and Santa Rita.
What you have here is an aerial photograph of the Santarita area and Agat area for a little bit of orientation. This is the Agat Catholic Cemetery here, right by the ocean. And then you have the Ordaag subdivision and the Hulay subdivision. Then you have Southern High, and this is Naval Magazine area. This is the road that runs right to the village of Santarita and connects with Route 4. You have a lot of vacant area up here in the hills, but a lot of people don't know that there is one single large landowner in the south that owns, I'd say about maybe one-third, one-fourth of the land in the south. The subdivision, the areas that are mostly open for development would be these vacant areas and these again are up in the hills. But also Santarita and Agat are inherently different in their heights of communities, where Santarita is basically a residential community. Agat has a, basically a commercial strip here and of course the road around the island passes through, passes through Agat. So there is a lot of potential for development along that route and people through the one in the Pagachao area. This is the Pagachao subdivision, and there are three big developments in Agat that maybe not even the residents know, the potential for development. This is the Agat Marina. This is the site of the proposed Serena Hotel with Danny Longere. Again, you have Route 2 here, and that basically owns a commercial strip. It's not zoned as a commercial strip, but a lot of the uses are beginning to migrate down south of the village of Agat. This is the Pagachao subdivision, Loco Sao Sin by Gura. And these lots here is one of the three major developments in Agat that hasn't taken place yet. This is the former Umang Land for the Land subdivision. The development that will take place on this would be, according to the Land Trust programs that they have, there are problems in the area. You see some gaps in the area here. That's because there are streams going in the area. And this subdivision, of course, does not have for the most part any infrastructure on it. So that, if it does get infrastructure, you have the potential for maybe 60 homes, 60 families in that area. Also, further down south, Water Tank, Agat Water Tank. Okay, this is the water tank down in Agat as you're going up towards the solid waste transfer station. This again is an area open for development. It's also the site of the proposed Southern Sports Complex. And this area here, this is West Santa Ana. It's a loop. Recently, the legislature passed a bill procreating $30,000 for that area. Power line goes in halfway here, goes in the other loop halfway there, but the middle part of the lot doesn't have power. With the installation of power in that area, you could be opening up that area for 30 to 50 homes in that area. That's already been surveyed, subdivided. Tomorrow Land Trust does have a master plan for that area. GPA is following that master plan that the Tomorrow Land Trust Commission have prepared, and they will be installing a certain amount of infrastructure in that area. And again, this is the Agat-Yumadik Road. The Santa Ana Chapel is right about here. And there are two things in Agat that are, you can consider Agat to be a host community, like Inorahan and Ordud, host community for the dump of the landfill. Well, Agat has a very important infrastructure that comes into it, and that's the cable landing over by an international road of TAPTA Communications and ICOM Communications. So in a sense, Agat is a host community for the internet services coming here and part of the Pacific-wide hub for cables, communication cables. And the other, the other, the other infrastructure that they're hosting for the island, especially for the southern part of the island. These are some of the projects, the red parts, Southern Guam. These are some of the projects that are being planned for Agat and the southern villagers. The one in blue marks, the green boxes, the sewer line improvements in this area, the Agat-Santarita wastewater treatment plant, and the sanitary evaluation survey for this area, some of the testimonies presented as let the infrastructure be adequate before you start any development. These are some of the things that GW is doing in the southern villages. One of the, the Agat COBC lands. This is the municipality of Agat. The properties in green are owned by the Land Trust. So in this municipality of Agat, this much, maybe about a good one-quarter acreage of the total municipality of Agat is actually owned by the largest landowner in the south, and that would be the Tomorrow Land Trust Commission.
Developable?
Developable with infrastructure, but not as much as you would see here as most residents of Agat. You know, these are up in the hills. You have problems with the roads, you have problems with access roads, and of course there's no infrastructure up in this area.
All right, thank you very much. There's a couple more that I overlooked that I've signed up. Agat resident Gerard Terlaii. And then Dr. Diane Strong, he also wanted to provide a written testimony. So you can step forward and when Mr. Terlaii is done, you can go ahead and receive.
Half a day, Senators, and welcome again to Agat. Very competent Vice Mayor, I'm sure did a good speech. I also, my name is Gerard Terlaii. I am a resident of Agat, and as well, I'm also with the Agat Municipal Planning Council. So I'm a little cognizant of some of the details. I didn't know everything on the bill. I reviewed a little bit. I am in support of both bills 365 and 366 with a couple of recommendations. So first with 366, recommendation with the moratoria, moratorium, a two-year effect. I would propose that thereafter that the moratorium be applicable through a general election by the precincts respectively. So for instance, if the, if there is a, no, let me take that back because it's just a concept. So the moratorium and then by, for instance, the general election upcoming could continue per municipal, municipal village respective area. So if the villagers want it to continue, so let me also just qualify this with, because there is no master plan, that this is definitely needed. We need a moratorium. Lack of this master plan, you know, things are going to go anyway. So anyway, and that thereby leading to confusion, a lack of, you know, competent planning. So because there's a lack of a master plan, there is no master plan in place, that I'm proposing that the moratoria for two years, I do support, but that they're respective for the southern master plan, you know, because there is none, and until that is completed, it might take more than two years, but it's only two-year moratoria, right? So the effect of a continuance of the moratorium by general election. I don't know how to put that in place, but it's something for consideration. Okay. Bill 365. Prior to the Guam Land Use Commission through their municipal planning hearing process, I understand that's what the bill is, so they can't conduct a hearing, the municipal planning hearing, until the respective MPC's mayor's office receives the complete report, the completed report. What I'm recommending here is that why don't the respective municipal that's affected be participant and not necessarily be, being able to hinder any process, but at least be cognizant, you know, be aware so that the information is not just a one-shot, we get it now, now we have to review it and process this and comprehend this. But if we had some forefront of information that the, not to say that, you know, that we will know exactly what to do, but we may have better opportunities to respond accordingly. So those are the two recommendations I have for the respective bills. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Terlaii. Does anybody on the panel have any questions? None? Okay, Dr. Strong?
Buenos, and half a day. I am a resident of Jonia and a 44-year resident of Guam, and thank you for this opportunity. I want to address as a case study, the Pago Bay Towers, to help the people who are attending tonight get a little feeling for a process that, in this case, didn't work really well. It began with the ARC meeting. Now picture the ARC. Those are the people from the most important infrastructure agencies. We're not talking about Department of Education, I'm sorry. They're not permanent members of the ARC. The mayor's council has no representative on ARC. So we're talking appointed directors, directors appointed by the governor, and employees of those agencies working for their directors, so that we're clear on that, correct? The ARC is chaired by land management's chief planner. So again, we don't have an unbiased person there. In October of 2015, the Pago Bay proposal went to the ARC. I have the minutes. The chief planner was very biased, pushing toward approval of this project, which is the second phase in Pago Bay.
I'm going to ask you to refrain from characterizing the, you know, how those people...
Okay, I apologize. Okay. Then the position statements are issued, and none of them are black or white. They're saying if you wear a pink hat and orange shoes on a Tuesday, we will approve. So eight pages of conditions are generated, and the position statements are not timely. The emails go out, we need that position statement, just as they're going to be needed in continuing this process regardless of what weight we are giving, whether it's more weight for municipal planning agencies, et cetera. The deadline is very difficult to meet. Then it goes to a public notice for the village that is most affected. Unfortunately, it's in the municipality of Jonia, but it affects Chalampago more than Jonia. So the public notice appeared as required by law on the day after Christmas, December 26th. And if the pink highlighter were not there, I don't think most people would have seen that. And we did not see that. And there was no second public notice two days before the January 7th public hearing in Jonia. The public hearing was not as beautifully organized as this public hearing. There were more than 100 people there. We're not quite sure who controlled the meeting. It was not orderly like this. Finally, after the public hearing, it goes to the GLUC. The GLUC entertained that application for three public hearings. The decision was made in May. Before the public hearing, this was available at Jonia Mayor's Office and Chalampago, but we didn't know about it. And we don't know how we're going to know that we should look at this great big application that only has an eight-page short form of the environmental impact assessment approved by Governor Carl Gutierrez in 1999. Shouldn't a project as big as two towers, 11 and 12 stories, which are conditionally approved, but they wanted 15 and 14, shouldn't that require the same kind of EIA that the military that we required with all those wonderful scoping meetings that we attended? We think so. We think there's a real problem with that executive order from 1999 because the developer fills it out and checks, no impact on wetlands, no impact on traffic, no impact on infrastructure. And that's a legal document. It says under perjury, under, you know, force of law, that those statements are correct. So the conditional approval, eight pages of conditions by the ARC members. Then we move ahead. In August, a permit is issued by GEPA as required by the GLUC. Before construction begins, you will be doing test borings for the foundation. We want to have a strong structure unlike the Royal Palm Hotel in Tumooning, which had to be imploded one month after the earthquake. At one month after opening, Guam's strongest earthquake damaged that hotel. Thank heavens, nobody perished in that, amazing when two floors collapsed. So these kind of tests are very important. However, the drilling permit, which is issued by the Water Resource Management people at EPA, had three pages of conditions. And Save Southern Guam from the very beginning has said, it's all good, well and good to care about our environment, our infrastructure, our impacts, but we need the government agencies to be able to enforce. We have always been weak on enforcement. So on the first day of the drilling, somebody violated the private property rights of the developer and went to the site and photographed the permit which was in the pickup truck supposed to be published, is supposed to be showed to the public on the access area. Then this individual went to EPA and said, there is no hydrologist on site from Water Energy Research Institute. And that person filed a complaint asking for a notice of violation. Long story short, EPA changed the permit language, reissued an amended permit, end of enforcement. These bills, once polished, will offer residents a stronger voice at the village level, at the southern level. These bills will improve the transparency of our agencies because if it's here in our village, we can see that they're in the wetlands or right next to the wetlands. And where is the Army Corps permit? You're right next to a navigable river. So this is just a very short case study on a problem, a project, which we think went horribly wrong. And the only redress is to go to court. Maybe you people are a little bit richer than we, members of Save Southern Guam, and I think Speaker, Vice Speaker BJ knows how long litigation process is. So again, if the law doesn't let you, just go to the legislature because it's a variance, it's not a zone change. So Save Southern Guam, really thank, thank you for caring about these problems, Senators. We really need a... We really need a master plan. We need, in the master plan, for the stakeholders, for who are we developing Guam for? Not just for outside investors. And Save Southern Guam is not anti-development. We are here for responsible development. So I thank you. Ms. Cassil offered our approved testimony amendments to both of these bills, with addition from Senator Uggins, Bill 318. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That exhausts our, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gumboa, he also wanted to speak. Thank you very much, Dr. Strong.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Roy Gumboa. I'm also a resident of the village of Agad. To make things rather quick here, I am in support of 365 and 366. As written, one suggestion, it was already brought up, and Mr. Terlaii here to, I guess, discuss an extension of the moratorium beyond twenty-four months. In my honest opinion, I think if we add those extensions, it's just kicking the bucket down the road. It allows the task force to basically drag their feet. I would suggest that, in order to move the task force forward, that if a, the moratorium have some type of verbiage that indicates that there is a two-year time limit on this, and this, again, is not counterproductive, rather, it is to help speed along the task force to create and develop this master plan. The people that have been appointed to this task force are highly educated, you know, city planners, village planners and whatnot, that I feel that in twenty-four months is more than adequate time for them to develop a southern master plan. Furthermore, I think the task force is limited, not only by numbers, therefore, I suggest in discussion there, that the task force be opened up to the municipal planning councils of each village, that they take part, and also have open forums similar to this, so that way, the input is not coming from individuals that are appointed, and rather, also include the municipal planning councils of each of the villages as indicated in the plan. Also, I'd like to touch on emergency government projects. Should that arise in the next twenty-four months, is there anything in there that stipulates that in this bill, that we would allow for, for instance, drastic erosion, for instance, down here in southern, down at Nimitz Beach? We lose about a foot of land and shore, sorry, shoreline, just about every year. I'd like to see move forward either by grants or any other means to help, similar to what was done down in Arahan, in Enunget Pago, with the border to protect the shoreline. If those types of projects are brought up, can that also be allowed to proceed during the moratorium? That's it. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead. Senator, since Senator Morrison was a co-sponsor of these bills, and he was also the sponsor of the bill that introduced the southern development master plan legislation, I'm going to go ahead and have him address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I, to answer the question regarding the expansion of the task force, within the statute, the governor has the authority to expand the task force as needed and recommended by each respective village community down in the southern community. So that provision is within the statute, so we can definitely look to that to expand I want to make it very clear that, that, you know, I don't want to take all the, or take this credit that they put before me regarding the southern development master plan. There was a lot of forethinkers within the southern community, specifically in Agad. Senator Rivera, in nineteen eighty-eight, working closely with his colleagues and Governor Ada, worked very closely to understand that the southern communities needed to be addressed, seeing that they were in that time, large-scale proposed projects that were being discussed, and those, those issues were being addressed, and many of the issues I've been talking about were being addressed. If we look back into the statements that were being made at that time, for some reason, the momentum died in moving forward with the plan, and, you know, working closely with the chairman and the committee here, we wanted to revive the southern development master plan task force, and the change that we made, the change that we made, that I believe was very significant, including our village mayors and vice mayors, and to ensure that, you know, as we go, as we're doing right now, going village to village, addressing these measures, we'll be doing the same thing with the southern development master plan to educate and bring awareness to how we want to grow our southern communities, how does Agad want to grow, how does Yumatic want to grow, Malesu, and so on. And in being consistent with the public law, if you have time, look at public law nineteen dash thirty-eight, and there's a whole list of guidelines on how that plan is to be developed. And I want to ensure that everyone get, be educated on that as we move along with that project. It's clear that we have, and we thank the vice mayors and mayors that are here, and that are, and that we have already met with, a meeting with the mayor's council, to ensure that we, as this moratorium, this legislation passes, that we have the timeline, or it kind of incentivizes the process to move forward with the plan, and to ensure that those guidelines are followed. Development doesn't necessarily mean a hotel in everyone's backyard, but if you look at what's defined in the guidelines, as it talks about agricultural needs, tourism, horse capacity upgrades, infrastructure, all the list is there to ensure that we guide this plan importance, and with the input of these communities, our southern communities. So please look out for a schedule of events to take place with respect to the southern development master plan, and ensure that, get educated upon the public law nineteen dash thirty-eight, and ensure that when you come to the table, that your input with the task force is embedded, or ensure that it's in this plan. I want to thank the chairman. We've been working very closely to, as we have southern development master plan address, we want to ensure that the moratorium is a measure that would definitely help move the process along a lot more quicker. We just don't want to see what happened in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety, that there was a lot of, just from what I've read, a lot of excitement at that time to move forward, and I just don't want that to, I just don't want to see that happen again. So this measure is very critical to moving that plan forward. It works hand in hand. With the ARC, I've been instrumental in that process as a former director of the Bureau of Stats and Plans, so I understand, working closely with the chairman, where the disconnects could be with our village communities, and how certain issues, as brought up in testimony regarding position statements, as they trickle in, and how soon they get into the hands of our mayors before they provide, or develop their resolutions in support or in non-support of the measure. And sometimes, they just don't have opposition statements before them, before they proceed to developing their resolutions with their MPC. So I definitely understand that, and I thank the chairman and the committee to ensure that, that.
... but with the addition of something else, and I didn't catch it, and I would, I was wondering if that would be okay with you, Mr. Chairman? Just that portion of the addition.
Sure. You can go ahead and step forward and repeat that testimony, however, you do have it in writing.
Yeah, yeah. And I did read my notes.
Turn on your mic, please.
I did read over my notes again, and I misread. I, the third recommendation was delete section four A.
Four A?
Yes.
Oh.
So that was my mistake. I apologize. So we would keep four B, which, the exemption for the homes.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you. She's keeping three. No, she's moved to delete that.
Thank you for your recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else?
Senator Torres? So there being no other testimonies or questions, we're going to go ahead and adjourn. Yes, Mr. Kandiff? Can you please step forward? Just take the mic over to him.
Since this is a very important process, it affects a lot of people in the south and other places, can we have a webpage to put all the nineteen dash eight in there and all the things being going on, so we can review this as time goes by? It's a lengthy process, and we need to educate ourselves, and it's very difficult to go down to the legislature and look at all of this. But if you create a webpage that we can review all the time on the ongoing testimonies or whatever they are, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Good recommendation. Thank you. Anybody else? We'll be, we'll be adjourning this particular hearing tonight. Tomorrow, we go to Maritzo. I'm sure we'll be staying behind a bit, make ourselves available if anybody has questions about anything else. Okay? So this meeting is adjourned.